Alright, so I'll start over. Hi everybody, this is Joanna Jane. Some of you may know me from Brown Girls Do Invest, or you've been following me for awhile on social media as I have the pleasure of attending and speaking at numerous events. Or maybe you just came across this. I don't know how we ended up getting, you know, over 100 women here tonight, but it's, I was just, you know, part to, it's nothing but God. I'm gonna just be, you know, in sharing, being transparent, how Faith Finance and Her came about. It really was when I got into the financial industry and I was studying and I see one of my partners, Nakia here, awesome, thanks sis for joining. I realized that a lot of what was being taught as I was going through the licensure process, I was like, hmm, this reminds me of such and such scripture. A lot of it, I started to see the connection in Proverbs. And for those that may not know, I was raised in a Christian household. My mom is an evangelist, my uncle was a pastor, my cousin is a pastor. My, one of my aunts that live in Trinidad, as you all know, I'm an island baby. She's actually a professor of a, she's actually the president of a seminary school. So, long story short, the Word was always around me. But as I got more into the financial industry, I started to really see like this was nothing, you know, far fetched from what I was being exposed to as a child, being raised in a household exposed to entrepreneurship as well as, as the Word of God. So, I wanted to be intentional with my workshops and allowing people to really see what the Word of God says to our daily practices and our financial walk. And that's how Faith Finance and Her came about. I'm also a woman in leadership, I have multiple businesses. And I truly believe that, and I say this without any, you know, bad intent at all. I truly believe it is more for women to do than just get married and have children. There's so much in us. I've sat with numerous clients, sometimes well into their, you know, 50s, that say, "Hey, I'm ready to start living," because Tommy is ready, is going off to college. And in my mind, I would say, "Well, what you been doing for the last 50 something years or 30 something years? Not living?" You know, that's what I really wanted women to understand. Like, you know, yes, you can birth the children, you can be a great spouse, but don't keep your gifts hidden for what society believes that you're only good for. So, that's where the Her part of Faith Finance and Her came about. So, we are going to be intentional in learning faith-based and financial principles that are necessary to create a legacy. Strong faith, wealth, and courage to execute your God-given assignment. And trust me ladies, as we're going through this together, as I speak to you, I am also speaking to myself. And nothing that I say tonight or in our future sessions will be things that I just thought about. These are things that God actually just allowed me to go through. And I always am big on making sure that people don't end up bleeding where I've bled if I can help it. Somebody's not muted, let's see. Just to set some norms for our Bible study. When we come to Bible study, we want to be prepared. So, I know this was the first one, myself and my assistant were getting some things together to make sure that everybody is getting the Bible study guide at least a week before. We had so many people still signing up that some people didn't necessarily get it the week before. But that is the intention, that you get it a week before the Bible study session so you can have time to be prepared. I want you to be open to participating. We want this to be a discussion. Even though sometimes people tell me when I get passionate about the Word of God, that sometimes I could start preaching. My intention is not to preach, but to teach you, as I would do in any of my actual workshops. So, you are able to be familiar with what the passages are actually telling you to do. We want to make sure that we are also staying on the topic. Sometimes when you read scripture, it can cause you to think and reference other scriptures. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but what I am saying is that we want to make sure that we don't get off in too much on a tangent. We want to make sure that we're staying focused on what the topic at hand is. Also be sensitive to other members in the group. Everybody is coming from a different background. And I want us to be sensitive to other people's thoughts and ideas. I will tell you this, if there is something that I don't feel confident in answering, I am one to say, "I'm not really sure." But I will look into that for you and get back to you. So, I just want us to be mindful of the upbringing and exposure of other people. So that way, we don't have anyone that's feeling, you know, left out or uncomfortable. Last but very not least, I want everyone to expect something from God from these Bible study sessions. You should not come in here just willy-nilly like, "I'm here, you know, I'm just here." No, expect that God, "You are going to reveal something to me, you are going to teach me something, you are going to use whether it's Joanna or the guest Bible study leader to help me as I'm trying to get clear in my assignment and what you need me to do for myself, for my family, for my community." So, come in here with an expectation. So, dates to know. You can jot this down, or you'll obviously get updates of, you know, when our next session is. But they're pretty much going to be every other Thursday, every other Thursday. So, twice a month, we'll meet for Bible study. As you can see, we have some guest Bible study leaders. The next one will be November the 27th, which I must say, I'm excited because that's my cousin, all the way from Trinidad. She's going to be here feeding us the Word of God, teaching us. She's a dynamic speaker. And she's just totally, totally phenomenal, phenomenal. So, her name is Roxanne James. Then also in January, on January 9th, we'll have Elaine Gonzalez Johnson. So, that's the mogul mommy, if anybody follows her. You've probably seen us on the radio station with Michelle Speaks Radio. She's also the owner and founder of Latina's Emotion. She has the Prey Plan Slay Planner, which I use basically daily, just writing out my goals, my gratitude, my affirmation. So, you'll hear more about what she has going on. And then in February, we have Ms. Jennifer Trotter out of DC. Now, I love, like, I've already just fallen in love with Jennifer. I feel like from the first time that we spoke, we instantly clicked. And I love the fact that she has an organization that caters to single women. And again, not allowing society to tell us what it means to be single. But what does the Word of God means, what does the Word of God say about the single life, right? So, she has an organization that she focuses on wives in waiting. And the way that she breaks it down, you don't want to miss that at all. So, that's going to be February the 20th of next year. Can y'all believe we're talking about next year dates? Isn't that crazy? So, another thing that's going to be coming up, what you'll have the opportunity to do. We want to make sure that we are, I'm exposing you, I should say, I want to make sure that I'm exposing you to conferences, different workshops that I attend, that I believe really helps me in my spiritual walk. I've been saved for a long time, but there's a difference when you know Bible and when you know relationship. There's a difference. When you know Bible, when you know relationship, it's very different. So, Woman Thou Art Loose last year completely changed my life. It was their masterclass focus. And life has never been the same ever since. And sadly, this is going to be their last, this is going to be their last conference, guys. Like, Woman Thou Art Loose is done after September 10th, 2020. I was like, "Oh my God!" So, I got my ticket early, like, before I even left Dallas last year, I got my ticket. But I would love to see us come together as Faith Finance and Her ladies and come to Atlanta. That's actually where it's going to be. So, if anybody is interested in joining myself and some of my ministry sisters at Woman Thou Art Loose, they're calling it the grand finale. This is going to be it. Let's all go together. I would love to see you there. And I definitely would love to see you there in our Faith Finance and Her inspirational apparel. So, this is, this is an inspirational line that I have. That's the link where you can go and get t-shirts, you can get fanny packs, there's cups, there are phone case holders. So, there's a couple of things on there that you can get. So, this is just a way for us to be able to spread the Word of God and also look cute doing it. So, this is how we are going to show up at Woman Thou Art Loose in 2020 of September. And with that being said, it's time for Bible study, y'all. So, if we could just take a moment. And if you are in a place with you or around any noise, just come to a moment where you can have some silence so we can pray before we get started. Lord God, we first give you thanks, we give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise for everything that you have allowed us to experience to this point. Lord, we know that there are not any failures, but only lessons. God, we thank you for the journey. We thank you for the doors that you open and doors that you close. We thank you Father God for allowing us to return to a place where most of us may be in our homes right now. So, thank you for allowing us to get back home safely. And thank you for the fellowship that is here, that is being, you know, connected through the airwaves, Father God. We just thank you for the women that are on this Bible study. We thank you for the Word that's going to come forth, for the information that's going to be learned and how it's applied to financial stewardship. But ultimately, how we can get a closer relationship with you. So, God, we just ask that you just cover everyone that's on this Bible study. Allow this Word to be truly a touch to their heart, that their lives will be different, their walk will be different. The rooms that they walk in, God, you will glow through them, that people will ask, "How can I be a part of this God thing?" Sometimes that people may say. Lord, we ask to touch over us as we're here tonight and for you to take complete control in your precious and holy name. Amen. So, let's go Bible. Anybody follow Pastor Hannah? You can unmute if you do. Anybody follow Pastor John Hannah? He's awesome. I love him. He's out of the Chicago area. And if you ever catch one of his lives on Facebook or Periscope, he has this thing where he says, "Let's go Bible." So, we're going to get into the Word of God and read. So, we should all be at chapter 11 of Hebrews, chapter 11, verse 1 through 16 is what we shall read. Now, faith is, oh, this is another thing. As we are reading, I know some people have different applications that they use. You might have an app, you might actually be like me, still old school, don't laugh, y'all. Like, my Bible cover has been through it. I've had this since I was like 10 years old. And maybe you actually do some underlining in your Bible. I'm going to pause in areas where I want you to underline. So, maybe on your app, you actually highlight, okay? Now, faith is being sure. So, underline being sure. Being sure of what we hope for, underline hope for, and certain of what we do not see. This is what the ancients were commended for. By faith, we understand that the universe was formed by God's command. So that what is seen was not made out of what is visible. By faith, Abel offered God a better sacrifice than Cain did. By faith, he was commanded as a righteous man when God spoke well of his offerings. And by faith, he still speaks even though he is dead. By faith, Enoch was taken from this life so that he did not experience death. Go ahead and underline that. He could not be found because God had taken him away. For before he was taken, he was commanded as one who pleased God. Underline that, one who pleased God. And without faith, it is impossible to please God. Because anyone who comes to him must believe that he exists and that he rewards those who earnestly seeks him. You might as well just go ahead and underline the whole, whole verse 6. By faith, Noah, when warned about things not yet seen, in holy fear, holy fear, make a mark there too, built an ark to save his family. By his faith, he condemned the world and became heir of the righteous that comes by faith. An heir, that too. By faith, Abraham, when called to go to a place he would later receive as his inheritance, obeyed and went. Obeyed and went, underline that ladies. Even though he did not know where he was going, by faith, he made his home in the Promised Land like a stranger in a foreign country. He lived in tents, as did Isaac and Jacob, who were heirs with him of the same promise. For he was looking forward to the city with foundations, whose architect and builder is God. By faith, Abraham, even though he was past age and Sarah herself was barren, was enabled to become a father because he considered him faithful. Who made the promise, underline that, as well. And so, from this one man, and he as good as dead. Has anybody realized how the gospel tries to like check you? He said Abraham was good as dead. That means his man part was done. He was good as dead. Came descendants as numerous as the stars and the sky, and the sky, and as countless as the sand on the seashore. All these people were still living by faith when they died. They did not receive the things promised. They only saw them and welcomed them from a distance. And they admitted that they were aliens and strangers on earth. People who say such things show that they are looking for a country of their own. If they had been thinking of the country they had left, they would have had opportunities to return. Instead, they were longing for a better country, a heavenly one. Therefore, God is not ashamed to be called their God, for he has prepared a city for them. May God add a blessing to the reading of his word. So, let's go back here. Now, faith is being sure of what we hope for and certain of what we do not see. And without faith, it is impossible to please God because anyone who comes to him must believe that he exists and that he rewards those who earnestly seek him. So, as you read through this scripture, and this is where I want us to participate. What connection have you seen between hope and faith? And you can go ahead and unmute if you want to answer this. What connection have you seen between hope and faith? Ladies, let's not be shy. We have an open conversation. And if you're not sure, unmute and say, "I'm not really sure. I'm a little confused." Alright, so we, we're going to keep.
Okay. I wrote down, I took some notes and I thought, maybe hope is the thought. And then faith is the action. It's like you have to actively have faith.
Okay. That's good, that's good. Thank you Tiana for sharing. Emily, I just saw that you unmuted. You want to share?
Yeah, it took me a minute to figure out how to do that. Yeah, I had, I had written down that, I don't believe that the two words are synonyms. I don't think they're the same thing. I wrote that hope to me is a wish, like a personal desire for, you know, some particular outcome to happen in a self-determined time. But faith is, is a knowledge that the vision, if it's aligned with God's vision, will come to fruition in his time. It's more than a wish and it doesn't have anything to do with me.
Wow, I like how you said that. It doesn't have anything to do with me. Thank you Emily and Tiana. So, ladies, it's always great that when you're reading the Word of God, that you see where the time, where is the author even coming from? Why is, why does the book of Hebrews even exist? So, the book of Hebrews is actually a book of letters written by an unknown Christian. It is believed that the author was well-versed in the time of the Old Testament. So, if you read through the book of Hebrews, you'll actually see that they reference the Old Testament just about 31 times. From, from different, you know, from their knowledge, it is also believed that they could have been like, have authoritative role like in the church. So, the person, although unknown, he's highly, or she, for that matter, is highly respected. But these letters were primarily for those that had been followers of Christ. And they were experiencing great persecution. So, they had already went through. They feel like we've now seen the light. We've had some, some good days, but they actually are preparing to go through more persecution, slavery, beatings, and so forth. Like I said, these followers had already experienced great persecution in the past and now even being threatened for more. And what the writer wanted to avoid was them retreating from, from Christ to actually avoid more difficult times based upon where they were living. So, they were actually encouraging them not to give up. We do know that these are the people that experienced God because in Hebrews chapter 5, they were being told that by now, you should be teachers. So, anytime somebody says, "Well, by now, your business should be this." By now, should you be done college? That's to tell you that they've had some type of experience. They were in school for awhile, or maybe they were working on their business for awhile. So, when that stated there in Hebrews 5, and you can go back and check this later. I just want to give you backdrop to what Hebrews, the book of Hebrews is about. You'll see that they told them, "By now, you should be teachers." You actually need someone to teach you the elementary truths of God. So, that's to tell you, they had been beaten so bad and persecuted so bad that they have to now go back to the small things. So, now I have to remind you that God separated the Red Sea for you. And now I have to remind you that he allowed you to cross the river Jordan. Now, I have to remind you of how he kept, I have to remind you of all these things. So, that's what the writer is actually doing. He even says to them, in chapter 1, he reminded them that God spoke to our forefathers. So, these are people from that lineage, that God's chosen people. And I'm sharing the background for you to understand the state of the audience and their current feelings. We can identify our times of how we've probably had great triumphs and great lows, maybe more valley moments than we actually want to admit. Maybe you've, you know, felt lost, beaten up, tired, overwhelmed, left out, or just even forgotten. So, even this topic of faith may even turn you off because you already feel like you gave it your everything. You gave the marriage your everything, you gave your job your everything, your kids, maybe even your community, and you're just feeling over it. So, just as the writer of Hebrews, this unknown Christian, in Hebrews 10, verse 32 to 35, I want you to write this down. Hebrews 10, 32 to 35, he encouraged them to remember the days when you received the light. Had great confidence, stood your ground. Don't give up now. You are richly, you'll be richly rewarded. And I'm paraphrasing that because he's really trying to remind these people like, "Hey, don't forget what you've already conquered, what God already brought you through. And if you stay the course and you don't leave him, you will be richly rewarded." So, our topic tonight is praise of faith. We will cover how faith, in spite of what we see around us, by using examples of some of the great leaders referenced in the, referenced in Hebrews, how faith actually applies to everything that we do. And we can't afford not to have faith because then we also lose relationship with Christ. So, we just went Bible. So, as we just heard from Tiana and Emily, the connection, you know, between hope and faith. Faith is in God's Word. So, God said it, I believe it, because I believe in God. Hope however, is the connection to the desire for the result of God's Word. So, you know, when Abraham, as they said, he was good as dead, and God told him that he was going to have a child, he believed in God's Word. But I hope by following you, that I see the result of what you say. So, that's the difference between hope and faith, which Tiana and Emily were pretty much on target there. What I want us to do is spend some time examining the people that were identified in this chapter. Because when you do that and you kind of reflect back on what they've experienced and what they went through, this is where we can really make the connection and break down scripture. So, feel free to jot down some of these notes if you would like. Like I said, this is a teaching time. This is not a preaching time. So, we're going to have, you know, conversation. So, when we think about Abel, so the first thing I want you to realize is that Abel's name means breath. So, that means, as quick as Abel came, as he, as he also left. He provided a generous offering on his heart attitude. And that's why God gave him, not just blessing him, but he also blessed his offering. So, Abel gave God the first fruit, not the first fruit, the firstborn of his flock that he was responsible for. In comparison to his brother Cain, he gave some of the fruit from his soil. And he did it in a different heart posture, as I would say. The Bible says, "Heart attitude," I say, "heart posture," all the same. Cain did it with a more careless and thoughtless offering. So, God didn't really observe what Cain was doing. And that's where the jealousy became and Cain killed Abel and so forth. So, the Lord looked with favor on Abel and his offering. So, when we think about operating by faith, it's this thing that doesn't necessarily feel good, but we know that we're doing it because of our relationship and our honoring to God. So, it's my honor first that you even give me the position, God, to be responsible over this flock. And I'm going to give you my, I'm going to give you the first of what comes from my flock. So, that's just with how I think, how I operate. I'm going to offer that to you. And that's where God was very pleased with Abel. So, even in death, he still was praised. When we talk about Enoch in the Bible, and he comes from the line of Seth. Seth was Adam and Eve's third son that was there. They considered him the anointed one. They were thinking that, you know, he would in a sense, quote unquote, replace Abel for them. Not necessarily replace Abel, you know, for God. And Enoch, he lived 365, oh, I thought we had to unmute. He lived 365 years and he, he walked with God. So, when you look back in Genesis, you'll see that he walked with God. So, when we see walked with God, that means I must have a relationship with you. That means I'm walking with you, I'm picking up on your pace, we're having conversation. He had a relationship with God. It was, it was commended that Enoch pleased God during a time God was displeased with man. So, this was not too far from the time of Noah. And we know God asked Noah to go ahead and create the ark because he was going to wash away the world. He was not pleased with man. So, think about this. During a time that everybody else around Enoch was acting crazy, doing whatever they wanted to do, he walked with God. What I did catch here was that for the first 65 years, though, it didn't say that. He said that he walked with God for 300 years. So, maybe it could have been exposure and the environment that he was, you know, in. If we take it, if we make it personal, you know, we think about finance, you know, maybe you weren't on the right track financially at first. Maybe all you did see was rob Peter to pay Paul. Maybe you only heard people talk about renting or all those things. But now it's time for me to shift and do something different. So, I think the transition between his first 65 years and the remaining 300 years talks about how that relationship with God changed. But still, God favored him. And he did not experience death. God took him away from him being righteous and from him walking with God and having a relationship with him. So, again, in spite of what our surroundings are, I'm still going to trust God. No matter what I see around me, I'm still going to trust God. They said, "Hey, come, come over here and worship this idol. Don't worry about that. Ah, I'm still going to trust God." So, that's why Enoch is favored so much in the Bible. Anybody have comments on that before I transition onto the next? Alright, so we're going to keep going. In Hebrews, it also, as we said, it referenced Noah. Noah, as we know from childhood stories, you know, if you went to Sunday School, Noah built an ark. He was, he was commanded to build an ark. And he was commanded to build an ark in a time where storms and floods of the magnitude of what God said to him was going to happen had never occurred before. So, he had every right, if he was like, "Nah, I don't really want to do that," or whatever doubt comes to mind, he had every right to think that way because that never, ever happened before. So, when we think about faith, typically it comes in where we get instruction from God that we have to do something, or we get a vision that we need to do something, but we don't have a blueprint for it. I know we have a couple entrepreneurs on here, because I know you personally. How many times have you come up with an idea, or you thought you came up with the idea, really God rested it on your heart? And you're like, "Well, who do I go to to get advice for this? Because don't nobody ever do this. I've never seen anybody do this." A lot of times, in the word of one of my favorite pastors, Pastor Darius Daniels, he says, "You are the person that you're Googling." So, you're up here wondering like, "Why anybody in my family has it? I mean, I'm not really sure." You're hemming and hawing all the way and God continues to disturb you and tell you and show you in different shapes and forms, "This is what you need to be doing. It'll come up at your work, it'll come up in the community, it'll come up at church, it'll come up from your kids." And it's a constant reminder that you need to be going to the right. But everything in you is saying, "No, I'm going to go to the left because I've never seen anybody do it." Well, for Noah, that was his situation. Well, for Noah, that was his situation. And he still said yes, and what? Walked with God, very similar to, you know, walk with God. And God gave, made a covenant with Noah. He told him, like, I'm gonna take care of you. Get your wife in there, get your boys in there, you know, um I need one of each, you know, animal, I got you. And if anybody else don't wanna hear it, that's on them. But God made a covenant. So not only did he give instruction. But he said, these are the things that I'm gonna do to protect you along the way. So the very times we are questioning everything, and I'm one of them because I'm a super duper planner. What I've realized when I finally said yes, like, oh wow, hmm, this actually worked out. That's because he knew what was around the corner. I can't see around the corner, but God can. So through his faith of building an ark, he became the heir of the righteous. Everything comes back from Noah. Came the heir of the righteous, that what? Comes by faith. Any questions, comments so far? Don't be shy. Alright, we'll keep going. Next, Abraham and Sarah. With Abraham and Sarah, and that was not their original names, Abram and Sarah. Um Abram's uh first command from God was to uh move in a direction that he was supposed to leave his country. His people, his father's household to a land he would show him. Now here we go again, something I've never seen before. I can't, there's no blueprint for it. No one can tell me, hey, God told me that two years ago. But he got up and he moved. What I've realized between the two, just looking at Noah and Abraham. When God gave direction, they did not question it, they moved. If you look at the scripture, there's no, there's nothing there that says they started to tell God why not. They automatically made moves. So God promised Abraham, um God's promise to Abraham was actually sevenfold, again, making another covenant. And he had a seven-fold covenant. So not only do I want you to, yes, leave your country, leave your people. Um leave your father's household and to go to a land that I will show you. So I got you, I just need you to come with me. But for you doing this, this is the covenant that I'm gonna make with you, that I will make you into a great nation. That I will bless you, I will curse whoever curses you, I will make your name great. All the people on earth will be blessed through you, you will be a blessing, and I will bless those who bless you. But all he just needs him to do is just say yes. So from their faith, when we think about them as a couple, from their faith, um in old age. Good as dead, remember the Bible said, Sarah even laughed. When I went back to to Genesis, just preparing for tonight, Sarah even laughed to herself to note, she was like, am I even gonna feel pleasure at this age? Now ladies, we can have a conversation. You know, when you start, you start questioning some things about, um am I even gonna have pleasure? So that means uh she probably had already given up on Abraham at this point, like, ah, ain't, it's nothing even working down there. So I don't even need to get excited, you know, about anything to happen, cuz this must be a big joke. It ain't been working down there for a while, God. Am I even gonna feel pleasure, seriously? So I can say that because there is nothing but ladies on here, so y'all, y'all understand where I'm coming from. So you see that with Abraham, he's good as dead, Sarah's like, nothing's down there been working. I know I'm old as I don't know what, but yet in their faith, still just say, I'm gonna trust God and his word, they birthed their son Isaac. So just again, following what God said will happen. And in in addition to this, after Sarah died, Abraham remarried, he had even more children. So his faith was so powerful that it woke him up that he even had more children beyond Isaac. So what is your faith holding you back from? Or the lack of faith, I should say, is holding you back from. So before I I share with you some of my additional, you know, thoughts here. Can anybody share what they found as they were going through some of, as they would call the ancients? Um what did they find that they had in common? What did you find that they had in common, all of them?
Good evening.
Hi, Melvina.
How are you?
Great.
Good, good. Uh I am enjoying this. Um in terms of what they all had in common, my answer is that they trusted God through every trial and tribulation. And the one thing you were just talking about, in terms that they, they didn't question and they didn't move. Uh they moved, actually makes me wanna ask the question, did they see him in a form? Different than what we see him because, you know, I can say there's times when I know I hear him. But it's not audible. Sometimes it's just a flash that goes by real quick, a thought that goes by very, very quick. But it's not like I'm having a conversation every day and I feel like I'm getting an answer back. So I guess, to answer your question, you know, they trusted him through the trials and tribulations, and that's what we all have in common. But I wanted to ask you the question in terms of what you were saying, that, you know, they didn't question and they did move. I mean, how could they be so sure? But yet, with Sarah having um given Hagar over to Abraham. To me, that's, I mean, that's the kind of stuff we do sometimes, you know, trying to make stuff happen. Or trying to move beyond his time. And in that case, she feels like she's normal, she's down to earth. Whereas sometimes it's just incredible that all of these people um are so awesome. You know, because of their trust level, what makes them so trusting and yet, I guess in my own life. I don't wanna say it's a struggle, but sometimes it is a struggle.
No, you're you're absolutely right. You know, to answer part of what you were um mentioning, what you just asked. If we were, if I was, and I can only answer this from my perspective, if God forbid, um I became blind. And the only thing I can go off of is my sense of smell and my hearing. If my mother or my father or my daughter was to call my name, I know all of their voices sound different. Why? Because I have a relationship with them. So I'd know I would never mistake my mother's voice for my daughter's voice. I would never mistake my daughter's voice for my sister's voice because I have a relationship. So all they had, from all we can go off is from what the word of God says, was direction based off of the word of God. Cuz it never said anything more than than that, right? So based off of the word, so that's to also tell you, when you walk with God, because several several times, you know, walk with God, Noah walked with God. You have a relationship with him that when you feel that you're getting direction, you know the difference between, oh, that was just something I was thinking. Versus, oh, I know this is something that I'm feeling that God has placed on me. Often, what I've found that when it's from God, it doesn't make sense. How does it make sense in a time where you've never seen a storm, a flood, of anything of this magnitude? But God is saying, this is what I'm getting ready to do, and I need you to build an ark. Doesn't make sense. Okay, so now we go to Abraham. Um so you just gonna tell me just leave everything? And then you just gonna show me? How does, how does that even make sense? If we even go down, if we go back, you know, I was, you know, making a little bit of a joke, but it's serious. You know, um to Abraham and Sarah, they were dirt old, like my father is ninety years old. Right? My father is ninety years old. If somebody told him, first of all, I would have a problem, but let's let's, you know, keep going. If somebody told him, like, hey, you're getting ready to have a child? What? What are you talking about? That sounds crazy. So what I find is that when you hear from God, it it often don't make sense. So that's the best way that I could explain it to you. You know his voice because you have a relationship with him. And the more that you read God's word, the more that you pray and you seek him, and you find quiet time in him. You should, you should be able to feel and know the presence of God and hear his voice very differently than others. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yes, that was perfect.
Okay, anybody else?
Um, hey, this is Sasha. Hey, I just wanted, when I look at, you know, Noah, Abraham, Sarah, Moses. I think, because when we talk about faith, a lot of times, people have this misconception. That when you have faith, that means you experience no doubt whatsoever. And I think I disagree with that. Because you can't tell me that Noah, when God told him to build an ark. And it's dry as the Sahara Desert, you can't tell me that in his mind, he wasn't thinking like, really? You want me to, okay, I'm gonna do it. But really? Even in the Bible, in the book of Genesis, in Genesis chapter seventeen, when God said about to Sarah. About her birthing a son, giving birth to a son, she didn't verbalize it, but in her mind, she laughed. So I I think, a- and this really, this is why I love the Bible so much, and this is why I love the people in the Bible. Because they're not much different than us, just like Melvina said, like a lot of this stuff that they did, some of the decisions that they made. The moves that they made, I mean, even look at Moses. Moses questioned God so many times when he told him that he was gonna be the one to 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 um basically to help his people. Moses said, don't you wanna use my brother? He gave so many different, isn't that what we do? And yet God still was able to bless him. And the reason why I'm saying this is because uh the presence of doubt. Does not necessarily mean the absence of faith. The Bible says too.
Pause, pause, let's let's all take a breather. Come on, come on Sasha. Let's say that sentence again, let's take a breather with that pause, that was a good one.
The presence of doubt doesn't necessarily mean the absence of faith. So, and and I, and and what really brought that home for me, I love uh Pastor Stephen Furtick. Because for for the longest, I had been to churches and I listened to people, I thought, well, if I experienced any bit of doubt, man, that mean I have no faith at all. And that's not true. Even the other version of the scripture, I think it's the King James Version, now faith is the substance of things hoped for. The evidence of things not yet seen. Just having that hope, that's an expectancy. I'm hoping and I'm 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 praying that God is going to do this. God honors that. So, you know, I just wanted to mention that because I love all these people in the Bible. Because Sarah, what she did, Abraham, can you imagine being ninety-seven years old, God telling you go have another baby?
Better not call me with no foolishness, we gonna have a whole problem, you hear me?
Man, and I I just think that's, I just wanna mention that because a lot of times we walk around, especially as us as believers, we walk around thinking. If I experience just the slightest bit of doubt, that means I'm horrible, or that means I don't have any faith at all. And I I think it's unfair. And we're in good company, that's another thing. God didn't use people that were right all the time. Look at David. My God, I mean, David, listen. David did some things. Yeah, God said he was a man after his own heart. So, you know, we're all in good company, so and I, maybe I'm preaching to myself, not, I'm not trying to preach. But, you know, just, it's okay if you experience a little bit of that doubt, that doesn't mean that you you don't have that right relationship with God. I I would say that pray through the doubt, whatever it is. No matter what you're experiencing, pray through the doubt. I I think there's a reason why God said over and over again in the Bible, even. I would never leave you, nor will I forsake you. He said this for a reason. There's a reason why this is mentioned all throughout the Old Testament, New Testament, trust me, I will be by your side. I'll I I know the very many hairs that are on your head. There's a reason that he mentioned all of this. Because he's letting you know, it's alright, it's okay to experience some doubt. I mean, I know Noah had to.
Yeah.
That ain't in the Bible, it is not written, but I know for a fact.
Um you're absolutely right, and I'm thankful that you um spoke on everything that you just stated. Because uh I feel like this is what's needed when we have Bible study. I am all for a good preach, shout me down, but this is where we have to examine the word of God and what his, what his word is actually saying. And if we go back to Hebrews um eleven chap- uh uh Hebrews chapter eleven verse seven, it says, by faith. When warned about things not yet seen, in holy fear, built an ark to save his family. So holy fear, meaning I'm gonna operate, cuz I believe God and I have faith in God. But that doesn't mean that I'm not fearful at the same time, people talking about you looking stupid, what the heck are you doing? What are you building over here? Oh, you preparing for rain, rain? Like, what is, what's this? You know, so it does say that he had holy fear. Um eh, you know, that as he was building, building the ark, right? So thank you so much, uh Sassy, for for sharing, you know, on that, that was really, really on point. Here are some others that we found. Uh what behaviors did they all have in common, an intimate relationship with God, right? That touched on what we just talked about not too long ago with Melvina, when you have a relationship, you should know his voice. You should know his word, you should be able to uh use the word as a sword against those times where fear comes up. Because why? Fear can easily be an idol. We hear sometimes, well, oh, they idolize gold, they idolize money, they do all these different things, but fear can be an idol as well. Anything that you, that causes you to um submit to it, so you're submitting your gifts for the idols of fear? Cuz of what society told you? So my intimate relationship with God, knowing what God's word says about who I am and who I belong to. Allows me to operate by faith. And it doesn't take away from times that I may have doubt or fear, but I'mma operate in holy fear. Meaning I trust God, I have faith in him, but sometimes these folks I'm around, you know, shakes me up at times. The experience of what I'm going through, because I've never seen anybody else do it, it makes me uncomfortable. When I think about O'Hara Developments, which is my community development company in real estate. Nobody could have told me that right now we would be planning for two blocks of development. Nobody could have told me that. You know why? Cuz I would have been like, and what bank account this coming from? And how are we buying? And, you know, I'm a planner, so I would be going down the whole thing. Well, how are we gonna go to corporation? Is there a fund available? Is this, 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 and this? But God just wants your yes, have your relationship with me. I told you that you would be able to be in control of the land. So a desire to please God. When you walk with God and you start to understand what his word says, and you see the the directions that he had. I know one for me in Proverbs where he says that you're supposed, you're supposed to provide an inheritance for your children's children. That makes me operate differently in my fin- finances, y'all. It makes me feel like on days where I've, where I'm being challenged the most in my business, I'm thinking about my grandbabies. Like my, and my daughter's fourteen, and she is not experienced in that area, but I'm already praying over my grandchildren. So I gotta stay the course for people that I may not even see. For my desire to please God of what his words said I'm supposed to be doing. And this is why we're having faith financing her, because all we're talking about is what? Legacy, securing the bag, right? These are the same things, no different. Um they live by faith even when they died, we're gonna get there in a second. They live by their, actually, we don't go there now, they live by faith even when they died. They operated by insight versus eyesight, and this is where we get in trouble. We often get in trouble because we start wanting to question everything, and I'm being very honest with you, especially women when it comes to finances. On average, we miss out on about a good million dollars in the, in in exposure to the stock market. And exposure to the investment market, because we um have to know sometimes everything. Guys will just jump in and figure it out along the way. I don't know, they told me sign up, sign this paper, so I just did it. But we overanalyze things so much, and even worse, if we don't have a blueprint in front of us. We become so hesitant about just getting out there and doing what we need to do. Because we're looking at what's in our bank account when God is looking at your faith account. Do you believe me? Do you believe when I tell you that you are above and not below? Do you believe that you are going to be um not, you're going to be the lender? I'm gonna make you a sponsor, do you believe that? But if you don't believe, I can't do anything for you. So our eyesight often sacrifices the very thing that God has for her, has for us. And remember, he can see around the corner, but we can't. So how does your faith in God affect your attitude towards the world? How does, this is one of the questions that was sent out, how does your faith, or even if you feel like you might have the answer just from us talking tonight. Um how does your faith in God affect your attitude towards this world? Anybody wanna answer that? We talked about Noah, we talked about Abraham, we talked about, you know, we talked about these people that were operating in, in, in a world, but yet, that were operating in the world that didn't mirror necessarily all of God's word, but yet they walked with them. So if you think about yourself, how does your faith in God affect your attitude towards this world, and if you're not prepared to answer, that's fine, this may be a question that you need to take some time and actually think about, like, what does my faith account actually look like? You know, do I just shift because the world says shift to the left? Or do I stand strong on my faith in God and, and able to ignore the majority of the things that maybe I get tempted to, so, tempted by, you know, in the word, so, in the world, so maybe that's something for you to think about, but I think Melvina might wanna share a little bit.
Yes, um, for me, it, it goes back to what I was saying earlier about trusting God through trials and tribulations. Um, when you do have faith and you know that he's brought you through something else, you know he can bring you through something else. It helps you to keep things in perspective. It also helps you to see things that others don't see. And even as we are talking about the world, well, you know, we saw this craziness going on, and sometimes we still say, what on earth is going on? But we know that the word says that these are the end times, et cetera, et cetera. So, w- with our faith, i- in my opinion, it does help us to keep things in perspective. But that doesn't mean, you know, again, you may not worry, you may not get anxious or anything like that. But the one thing is, when you trust him, you can stop and pause and go to him. Versus somebody who doesn't know him and doesn't have any hope. You know, that's why some people are jumping off of bridges and everything else, because they don't believe. But if you do believe, you can trust him and keep things in perspective.
Right, thank you for sharing that. Um, another thing that I would like to add towards that is that remember that God allows problems to happen for your gifts to be the answer. God allows problems to happen for your gifts to be the solution to the problem. So right now, if we focus on a little bit of real estate, some people are really upset with Trump right now, and I'm, you know, I don't give too much heat to it, but I stay alert on what's going on. But what I did when a lot of things were happening and people were asking about, you know, well, he doesn't pay taxes, and this person doesn't do this, and, you know, gentrification, that, all these different things, I started to pray and ask God for understanding of it all. And everything happens in season, so I would encourage you that as sometimes we see things are happening in the world, that we ask God for understanding in our prayer. And we start to look at the opportunity that is now being provided for our gifts to be in demand for, for the solution. So right now, this is actually the prime time for people to get into real estate. The prime time, some people are like, oh, the, you know, th- this is happening on my block, and this is happening here. But it doesn't say on any of the paperwork for you to own some of those same houses on the, on the block, that you have to be white, that you have to be Hispanic, that you have to be blue collar, that you have to be white collar. It says if you are able to aid, to be able to provide A, B, C, and D, to be a part of this opportunity, and if you get yourself set up, A, B, C, and D, if you were doing what you needed to do during the Obama era, it almost prepared you for what's happening right now during the era of Trump, which may be coming to an end with all this impeachment, this, you know, hearings and so forth, this going on. So, what I'm saying is, is that don't let your faith shift based on what the media is saying. Seek understanding. Because he may be providing you an opportunity to allow your gift to be the solution. Okay. Um, how did they see themselves in comparison to the world? How do they see themselves in comparison to the world? Based upon the reading, um, anybody wanna share before I give that? Give some of the information here.
I don't wanna leave you out here hanging, but I know I'm the only one on this call.
That's alright, that's alright.
But basically, I think they said they saw themselves as strangers, as pilgrims, as aliens um, on the earth, that they were really just passing through.
Now, how many times can, thank you, Melvina, now how many times can we say, as women with vision, when we know God has spoken to us, when we know that we've been charged with an assignment, and then when you go talk to your best friend, that's been your friend for twenty something years, or your brother, or your, you know, your coworker that's been at the job for fifteen years, and they start looking at you like you have horns coming out of your head. Right? So they felt like, as Melvina sa- stated, they felt like they were aliens and strangers on earth. Who in the world could Sarah go and talk to and share with them that I'm gonna have a baby? They would be looking at her like she's crazy. Noah, crazy, right? In a time, you know, where, where people, we had Sodom and Gomorrah, you know, Enna, people would look at him like you're crazy, right? This is what you're supposed to be doing over here, not worrying about that God stuff. They were also looking for a country of their own, a heavenly country. That's why in, 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 um, in, in Psalms, it says, as it is in, in heaven, let it be here on earth. As it is in the kingdom, let it be here on earth, they were looking for a heavenly country. Their sacrifice was greater than their personal benefit. Their sacrifice was greater than their personal benefit, why? Because we also go back here and it says, they did not receive the things that were promised. Because how would Abraham ever know that he would become, that he was gonna get, he was gonna be made into a great nation? That doesn't happen until what? After death? All of the people on earth will be blessed through you, how would he ever know that? After death? So they saw in comparison to the world that this sacrifice, this thing that I'm doing, this legacy thing that I'm doing, the saving, the sacrificing, the investment, this is bigger than me, I'm praying over great, great grandchildren, I may not be here. I mean, granted, my grandmother is ninety-five, but, you know, and she has great grandchildren, but who knows, right? So the sacrifice is bigger than your personal benefit, and I'm sharing this with you ladies, because as again, when we go back to our finances, sometimes people may say, and I heard this the other day, um, uh, you know, I don't like saving for a rainy day, cuz tomorrow's not promised. But it's not just about you. It's not just about you, you paying for that life insurance policy is not just another bill. You are helping to secure the legacy, the foundation for your next generation. When people ask me, what do they believe, what do I believe legacy is, legacy is generational elevation. Generational elevation, meaning the, the last generation should not be the same as the next. The next generation should be better in some shape or form. Hence why this unknown Christian was trying to remind God's chosen people, hey, remember what God has already done for us, don't lose hope, don't lose faith. Cuz you're gonna be richly rewarded, so don't give up on Christ in the midst of being persecuted. So the sacrifice that you'll make, maybe that might be downsizing your car. Maybe that might be realizing and admitted to your, admitting to yourself that you purchased a house that you really couldn't afford. Maybe you might have to make some hard decisions to get in alignment in your financial walk, so you can really afford to maybe put the down payment on the business, uh, for the business, uh, that God has asked you to do. Or maybe it's to hire the attorney that's gonna help you write all the documents. Some of us have to get prepared to make some big sacrifices. And the only way that's gonna happen is recognizing, one, I gotta have faith in God and what he's telling me to do. And two, I gotta definitely know this sacrifice is much bigger than me. So that means that we downsizing the car, and guess what, that's what we doing. Or for that matter, depending on where you live, maybe you're getting rid of the vehicle. Maybe you might, you know, foot it, bike it for a while, sometimes that's what it is, right? And it doesn't mean that you have to live there all the time, but it's a short time, uh, sacrifice for a long-term gain. Ooh, here we go, how has your faith? And, you know, I'm not going to force anybody to answer this, um, but this is something to think about. How has your faith in God affected your ability to create financial wealth?
I'll, I will say that my faith in God, cuz this all goes back to faith overall. Things haven't come into fruition yet. Things haven't manifested yet, but God is ordering things and putting me in positions and, and getting me to even meeting certain people. So he's preparing me for another level, he's preparing me for another place. I don't think I would have been able to, even where I'm at now, I don't think I would have been able to get here without that faith in God. Because the lack of faith, if I didn't have any faith at all, that meant I wouldn't have had any hope. And when you're hopeless, that's a, that's a bad, that's a dangerous place to be in. Because now you're talking about being, you know, you're living in despair. You know, you, you feel like there's nothing, like, like, things are just useless, that's a really heavy place to be in. Um, I would have to say, yeah, my faith in God has really, um, has really helped with getting me ready for financial freedom, because he's already given me the vision. And because he's given me that vision, I'm gonna hold fast to that, I'm not gonna let that go. You know, um, he's given me ideas. There are times when I just could be driving, and I'll be thinking to myself. And, and, and can I just say, um, I read from, uh, Ross Hamilton, he's the, the CEO of Connected Investors. It's like a real estate platform, kinda similar to BiggerPockets, for everybody that's in real estate, but, um, he mentioned that he's, one of the things he gave an exercise to do is to write out, uh, all of the things that you wanna do, write out where you see yourself going, things like that. And I started writing out stuff that was way bigger than what I could think of, but that's okay, you know, I feel like God is such a big God, and he, you can't put him in a box. So I started writing out, envisioning being interviewed by Oprah, being interviewed on BiggerPockets. I envisioned myself being interviewed on so many different media platforms. Because that's, but, but that all goes back to faith. That's a huge one, I, I even envisioned myself just some of the questions they might ask me, and coming up with the answers already, and how I got to where I've gotten, even though in my real estate business and things like that, I haven't even, I haven't even scratched the surface yet. But I see it already, not with my plain vision, but with my supernatural vision, I already see it. And when you have that type of faith, that's definitely gonna affect your ability to create financial wealth, because you've got to see it before you actually see it, you gotta see it in the spirit, before you actually get to see it in the physical, in the natural. And I think a lot of times us as believers, we forget that, because we, we're, I mean, we're, we're regular, we're human beings. So we see with our eyesight, but we have to al- also remember that everything that's going on right now in the natural, there's something else taking place in the supernatural. So, yeah, my faith in God is, has definitely impacted my ability to create financial wealth.
Anybody else wanna share, how has your faith in God affected your ability, uh, to create wealth? Or to begin, or even to begin to create wealth, right?
Well, that's one of the reasons why I'm here. I can believe God, you know, to get me through a trial, a tribulation. But the one area that I've been struggling, had been struggling with, and the doors are starting to open because I'm asking God, um, is m- money. And I know a lot of that has to do with, uh, generational poverty mindset, some of it's, um, I'm gonna say lack of clarity of the word in terms of struggling with, you know, you can't serve God and Mammon, you know, scriptures that say, uh, Lord, don't give me too much, but don't give me too little, you know, just enough so I don't forget you. And it's things like that, that kinda keep me bound. And I'm at the point where, you know, I'm asking God to, you know, s- give me supernatural increase. You know, I want to see six figures, I wanna see seven figures, and as I'm praying, I, I guess my faith is working because I'm here.
Alright, that's the first step, you made a step, right?
Yeah, so, but for me, in, in answering the question, my head has been in the sand for way too long, and I guess as, I'm, you know, above middle age at this point, your values change and you see differently, you see your timeline a little differently, so you have a different energy. Because at this point, there's things that I wanna get to while I'm still alive and I'm still well.
And it's still possible.
Absolutely.
It's just, it just requires a different strategy, the strategy maybe that would have been there at twenty-five, maybe different when you are, you know, forty plus or fifty plus. So it doesn't mean it's not possible, it just means that it requires a different strategy, and the reason why I put this question here is to really, again, before we start really getting into investing and saving and real estate and all this stuff, we have to think about, if I'm saying I'm gonna buy the block, do I even believe in God that this will happen? Because we get caught up with all these different trends, all these things that people are saying, but where is your faith in God first, cuz I can tell you, it's a lot of things people will promise you along the way, but it can fall out in a heartbeat, just as you thought the deal was getting ready to go through, and then what? Because if you were only doing it for money, and you were never connecting it to what the word of God said, and what your assignment is from what he, for what he has you for, it, it's not gonna make, you don't give up. Because you were chasing money, you weren't actually going for the value, right? So I encourage you that, you know, um, to think about this. How has, you know, my faith in God affected my ability to create wealth? And if I haven't, if your, if your answer is, you know, really, I haven't had faith in God, then I ask you to then look at your financial situation and see the correlation between the two. And if you are saying that you have a lot of faith in God, and you don't know why your finances aren't working out, well, are you also not moving? Cuz sometimes people say, I have faith, I have faith, but they don't move. Their hands are closed, they don't talk to anybody, they don't go anywhere, they don't connect with people, they don't take risks. You're not taking enough risk for God to even get involved, get into some problems. Get into some things that require you to pray, and ask God for guidance and understanding, and, and, and to, and, and pos- and repositioning. Do some things that are outside of your control that he can really get involved in. He's not gonna get involved for things that he already gave you access for. So get enough problems so God can be able to get involved, but if you're playing it safe, that's not where wealth is. Alright. So I want you to, you know, think about this, you know, over, that's over the next, you know, week or so. And this is just food for thought, I'm not gonna really, you probably would never really hear me talk too much about homework, because we're, we're all grown, um, if you would like to connect with someone to, you know, be a quote-unquote accountability partner, or have someone to have conversation with, then obviously, you know, you can do that. But I want you to think about these questions over the next, you know, um, week or so. You know, how does Hebrews, chapter eleven, encourage your own faith? Are you earnestly seeking God daily? You know, do you only seek God after you made a mess? Like, okay, I, I was operating in my own will, based on what I felt like doing, and what I knew I can afford. Uh, but now it's a mess, God, come help me. Come help me. Are you allowing a lack of faith? Um, you know, it should be and, or, and/or negative financial beliefs to limit your ability to create wealth? Are you only going off of what you, what mama and them used to do? Uncle Junebug and them used to do, you know, what my friends in college used to do, if that's the only thing that you're going off of, and you're seeing a limitation in how far you're able to go, I encourage you to really assess that and think about some things that you need to possibly change. And then are you leading with hope than faith? Now let me explain this. Sometimes people try to put hope first, and hope is not first, faith is first. Because sometimes you'll do this, well, you know, I hope it work out. I have faith in God. I believe what his word said. I have faith in God. I believe what his word said and I'm hoping for the result. That's it. For me, I hope that my grandchildren are able to see the sacrifices that Mama J made, you know, in some shape or form, maybe it's their lifestyle, their academic, you know, access, any, I hope that that does, but that has happened. But I have faith in God for the steps that he is putting in front of me to take to get to that destination. So you don't wanna put hope before faith. Um, so that's something to think about. Are you leading with hope than faith? So that was our first Bible study ladies, um, topic again, uh, in praise of faith. And I hope that you were able tonight to really, as you were, not even just tonight, but as you got the assignment before, that you were really able to see, um, this as really as a faith assessment to look at what the ancients had done and their relationship with God. You know, what were they, um, how they were actually moving? How they weren't really questioning what God was telling them to do, but they did, as Noah stated, he had, um, holy fear, right? You know, so it didn't take away from his feelings, it didn't, um, uh, it didn't take away from the fact that people were talking about him around there, but he believed in God. So I want you to take this time, if it all finally came together, if it all finally came together tonight for you, that you spend this next two weeks and doing a faith assessment and thinking about how you react to opportunities that are coming your way. How are you coming, um, how are you reacting when people present to you investment opportunities? You know, did you buy the stock that you've been saying that you were gonna buy for the last three years? Have you done it yet? And if you haven't, why? You know, cause we don't know what's gonna happen, you know, with Apple tomorrow, but hey, the probability is there, right? But your, but your faith has to be there for you to do this investing thing. Because nobody knows what it's gonna look like. Remember, if we go back to Hebrews eleven, one, it says, "Now faith is being sure of what we hope for and certain of what we do not see." We don't see it right now. That is certain. We do not see it, but we are hoping for it as we walk by faith. So spend this time, assess your faith account in your prayers, ask God to increase your faith. So that way you can really tap into the things that he, you know, truly has, um, for you. And that's where we're going to see, you know, the biggest, the biggest change, you know, in our lives. So I'm gonna open it up for any questions that people may have or comments. If you don't have any comments right now, would love your feedback later. Feel free to send an email, um, to the email address that's actually listed in your registration, which should be theCFcoach@gmail.com. But if anybody has any comments or questions, um, ladies, I would love to hear from some other ladies other than, you know, Sassy and Melvina, if you're bold enough to unmute. I know we have some bold women here.
Hey, everybody. This was so very much needed. And I can tell in the chat, we all on the same page. Um, I just wanna say that part at the end where Joanna, you mentioned, you know, do some stuff that, that's gonna require your faith, right? For God to intervene. And I feel like I just was in a, in a season where I felt like, oh, you know, I'm stuck, I'm uncomfortable, I'm praying all the time, like I'm trying to figure it out. But like, that's where I needed to be. Like I need, God put me in this uncomfortable place where I'm trying new things, I'm trying to buy stock, trying to buy these, you know, multi-unit properties and, and things that I've never done before and the people around me haven't done before. And I thought I was in a bad place because I needed to pray so much or I needed to figure it out, I felt stuck. But maybe that was a good place, like that's where my faith had took me to. Cause I had faith that God would do it, but I just needed that push. I needed to ask him for guidance. And so that place where you feel uncomfortable, it's not a bad place. That's what I'm learning. Like that's where you grow, like because you know, on the other side of that, I feel like I can share the experience with someone else. I can say, you know what, God took me through that. Cause it wasn't me. Cause if it was me, I would have been like, nevermind. So, so I mean, that right there, I need that, that was everything.
Oh, great. Thank you from so much for sharing. I'm glad that you were able to make the connection. God wants you to get uncomfortable and he wants to get, he wants you to give him something to get involved and take greater risks so he can get involved. That's great. Anybody else? I see we have some chat, some conversations happening in the chat. Um, I just don't wanna leave anybody else that might have a question. Remember, this is Bible study. So even if you wanna put your question in the comment section, um, and we'll discuss, I just wanna really make sure that we are being intentional. Um, and we provide time to have a conversation. Like I said, this was not necessarily a time to be preaching, but really just examining what the word of God actually says as we are on, um, our, our financial journey, our faith journey.
I just, I just wanna add this for everybody. It's a word of encouragement and this is, this is also to encourage myself. A lot of times our faith or our lack of faith, a lot of times it's tied into how we view ourselves and how we, how we value ourselves. And I just wanna say, for all the ladies on here, you are worthy and deserving of everything great that God has for you. And this is where really being in your word and seeing yourself the way God sees you is gonna propel you so much forward. A lot of times we don't think we're worthy, we don't think we're smart enough, we don't think we're good enough, we don't think, and, and society has such a way of making us as women, especially black women, feel like we're not good enough. And you really have to be tuned into your word and stand on that word. And, and, and I don't care if you gotta write it and put it on your bathroom mirror every day. So when you go in the bathroom, you see it. To just stay encouraged and know that you are worthy enough, you are valued. And I believe that when, a lot of times us as women, when we start feeling that way, our faith is automatically going to grow. One of my simplest prayers that I say to God is in, and I believe it's in the book of Luke, is where God, where, um, the disciples say, "Lord, increase our faith." That's one of the things that I like to say to my, "Lord, increase my faith. Just increase my faith." Whatever you gotta do, Lord, just increase my faith. But you ladies are all worthy, you're valued, um, you are loved. You are fearfully and wonderfully made. Stand on that word. Meditate on that word, seriously. Because it's gonna be hard and, and your friends are not gonna be able to always encourage you. Your family's not gonna always, you gotta encourage yourself sometimes. But if you got that word in you, you're good.
Yes, stand on the word. Stand on the word. Thank you so much, Sassy, for, for sharing. Um, they are raving about you in the chat room. Yeah, she is, she is rocking, she's on fire tonight and I love it. Thank you so much. And, um, if there's anything else that someone would like to share, feel, feel free to, to unmute um, before we, you know, um, before I have some final words and then we go to God in prayer. Leslie, oh, hi.
Hi, how you doing?
Great.
I just wanna thank you, thank you for this, um, Bible study platform because, I have been struggling, um, with my finances. Um, by, by faith, I stepped out and left my corporate job. And to do my, to conduct my, to do my, build my business full-time and not part-time for the last ten years. And by faith, yes, I've got more business. But again, the finances aren't where I need them to be. And I, and even though I have the work coming in, it's just not panning out, showing the relationship of the work and the finances. And when you're faced with that, it's like, okay, God got me. And every day, I give God the praise, the glory, because I know he got me. I don't care what's going on. I may have a notice shut off, a shut off notice, I may have another bill come in to add to my plate. But I stay encouraged because I know what he stands on. And when I read about Sarah, when I read about Abraham and, and Moses, and it's, and it's fed to me every day, whether it's Joel Osteen, whether it's Stephen Furtick, whether it's, um, my pastor, you know, or just speaking with someone that is of, that is going through the same, you know, entrepreneurship is, is real. It's, and when you have people, even your close loved ones, they don't have, they're looking at you like, really? You got, you, you're struggling, you, you know, you backing your bills and you trying to do this and, you know, why don't you just go get your, just go get a job? And, and not put, and not do this, because you've been doing it long enough. But then I get another person saying, you've been doing it long enough, don't give up. So it's just a emotional roller coaster, but it's emotional where, you know, you look at, like, you know, look at the, look at the world and you're seeing things happening, but at the same time, you're knowing, God got you. You know, the devil is a liar. And I just, you know, you know, thank, thank you for this platform. Ladies, thank you for the encouragement. As I will stay in my, I will stay with this Bible study to keep me focused. And just know that God is here, God is amongst us, he's in our, we're in his presence. And I just, again, I, I thrive on his word every day. I'm on my knees and I'm asking him, "God, I'm, I'm uncomfortable." I have some real talks with him. Even when I worked the corporate job, I wasn't happy. I was happier more with my corporate, with my, with my job, uh, my catering job than, than with my corporate job. And I can do an all-nighter with no problems.
That's right.
But it's when I walked in that, in that corporate job, I got sick to my stomach. I hated to drive. I had, you know, just, it was just an emotional tear down in my spirit. So I just stand, I stand steadfast and, and thank you ladies for just your inspiration, your continued inspiration and confirmation, cause I'm receiving confirmation after confirmation. And things are opening and I know they're coming. And God has, and I did, I've asked God to stretch my faith. I've asked him and when I asked him, he sure enough, he's doing that. I almost wish I didn't say that, but you know, I uttered those words. And, um, and it's just, you know, the journey is real. And, and while we're on this journey, we just continue to be detoured and put on the past such as meeting people such as yourself with the same fears and, and unworthiness, but I do feel worthy. Thank you Sasha. I do feel that I am loved. And fear has no place here in my life anymore.
That's right, that's right.
So I thank you.
Um, you're welcome. Continue to speak life over everything that you're doing. God not only looks at how you operate in the triumph, but he's also looking at how you operate in the storm. So what do you do when it's raining? You find a way to dance in the rain and figure it out. Don't give up in this season. Push through it. Because this is sometimes the very time where the answer is coming. When there's more pain and more problems, typically there's greater purpose that's being revealed. And there's a lot that he's trying to show you. So obviously, I don't know any details of your, of your business and what support you actually need, but I can tell you that in this journey, it requires you to get even closer to him. It requires you to be able to hear his voice even more and even more encouragement. You mentioned something. So I, I would assume there's limited, there's limited, limited to no family support. Um, that can be very difficult. I'm gonna be very honest with you. As I have elevated, my circle has gotten way smaller. And I'm a woman that's in a sorority, comes from a huge family. Um, like I, I can go, the list goes on. But something in this walk thing, if you look back at these people, they did it what? Small, alone, it's only a few of them, they call out their names, right? So when you feel low, a lot of times your, your answer is in the ditch. Dig deeper. What happens when you dig deeper? You strike oil, you see water. The answer sometimes isn't the very thing, but in our prayers, we have to ask God for understanding. So Leslie, I encourage you to actually reach out to me, um, I would say next week for, uh, all of you probably know that I lost, um, my aunt who is, who was very close to me. Um, so I'm preparing for a worship service over the weekend. But definitely send me an email, um, sometime top of next week. I would love to know where you are in your business and if there's any guidance that I may be able to give you, um, by having like a quick, you know, business consultation. So just reach out to me and send me, uh, send me an email. Um, if there's no one else, I wanna be respectful of time. It's, it's now eight thirty-four. And I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, our minds are clear. If there's anybody else that has a comment, concern, anything that I, I'll leave it open for you to, to do that now. And if not, then we're just gonna go ahead, um, have some final words and, um, go to God in prayer. And thank you so much for all the comments that I'm seeing, um, uh, in, in the chat. Alright, so ladies, thank you again for, um, our first faith finance and her, um, Bible study in praise of faith. That you are going to praise him and still have faith, even when it looks crazy, even when it looks like, God, why and how did you choose me? You're still gonna have faith in God's word. You're gonna read his word. And I couldn't, I encourage you to spend some time in Genesis. You'll be surprised, um, you know, the encouragement that you'll find and how God gives you direction. And at the same time, he turns around and tells you how he's with you, how he'll never forsake you, how he wants you to be strong and courageous and how no one will be able to withstand you. So when you're up here looking at people on Instagram or Facebook, or as we would say, fake-agram in Facebook, you know, you're up here assigning comparison and God's like, no one is gonna be able to withstand you. Because what I called for you, I have completely and only for you. Yeah, you're in real estate, but guess what? The way you're gonna do it, nobody else has done it. Yes, you're in the medical field, but guess what? The way that I have, the plans I have for you as a, as a nurse, nobody else has done it. Everything is designed based upon the DNA that God has given you. This thumbprint, nobody else has this, right? So I encourage you to have praise in, have praise of faith through it completely all. And I encourage you in this, as I spent the last month helping my aunt transition to God. And I've never had this experience before. And I want you to really understand that our time here on, on this earth is temporary. It is temporary. We are here for an assignment and we are to return home. So I'm gonna share something very personal with you before we go into prayer. Maybe roughly about, let's call it a week before my Auntie Minelle took her turn for, for the worse. I was in prayer, I was on my knees and I was really in worship. And I had this thing that happened. I don't know what it was. I just felt like, ooh, what's this feeling of, of return? This feeling of like, ooh, I wanna go there. And I could not understand it, but it felt like when I came out of prayer, where I am here didn't feel as good as where I was in that, right? So I was wondering, what was this? And I ended up, you know, talking to one of my ministry sisters and she said, you had a beyond the veil moment. You had a presence with God moment. And what I felt was a returning moment. So let me help you understand. If anybody's ever been on vacation and you've been on a great vacation, it was awesome. You had the food, you had the beaches, you had the great tours, you really enjoyed yourself. But it does come a point on vacation where you're like, you know, I'm kinda ready to go home. Like going home is, 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 it's time's up. I'm ready to catch my plane. That was the feeling that I had. It was a very home feeling. And what I realized is that I had a presence with God feeling that showed me that my time here on earth is only temporary. He let me leave him to come here on earth to fulfill an assignment for his kingdom to then return. Then within a week's time, I get a call from my aunt that things are changing for the worse. She chose not to go through hospice. She said, I want my family to be there. I want you there. And whenever God's time comes to take me home, then that's what shall be. Do you know, ladies, we did nothing but praise and worship God. She was already a worshiper. But I was surprised because at a time where somebody should be angry, upset, frustrated, you got a nineteen-year-old daughter that's in college, you're never gonna see her have grandchildren, you won't be at their wedding. You're leaving three beautiful children, right? Maybe there should be some anger and frustration. And I'm not gonna say she didn't have her days where she was a little snippy. But that woman worshiped God like I've never seen anybody have in my life. As she knew she was leaving here because she was going to a place, she was returning. She was returning. Her time here was done. I saw generational curses start to break because of her transition. Family members that didn't speak in years started to speak. Conversations about legacy and meetings started happening. And I just had to sit back and I said, oh my God, look what is happening in a time when the world would be mad, when people would be frustrated, but we're Look what is happening in a time when the world would be mad, when people would be frustrating, but we're finding a way to praise God? Ah, that's what this is. So I'm saying to you ladies, don't get disturbed, don't get distracted by what we're seeing around us. If God has given you, not if, the assignment that God has given you, you are to fulfill it. You are here more to birth babies and just get married. You are here to turn up some things, shake up some things, talk more in the, in the boardroom, create the business, make the leap of faith, take on greater risks, do it based upon what the word of God says, because his word will never, ever return void. And he says so many times in his word that I got you, I got you. So when it hurts, praise God. Some of you probably see me post this online. I still believe God. I still believed him through it all. I still believed him when she said, I'm not going back to chemo. I still believed him when she said, I'm tired and frustrated. I still believed him through it all. So even when the kids are getting on your nerves, the marriage is being tested, we still believe God. When it seems like I don't have the money to even hire the lawyer, how am I going to get the real estate? I still believe God. I'm still going to go to the networking event, because you know why? Your answer might be in the very room where you're frustrated. So don't allow your flesh, don't allow other people to get you distracted on your assignment. Whoever doesn't align with your assignment, they got to go. They gotta go completely gone. Because if they are coming to distract you from what God placed you on this earth for, it's a problem because your time here is temporary. You have to return back home. And when, as my mother would say, the videotape rolls, you can't say, well, everybody was talking about. Cause God made the ultimate sacrifice by allowing his son to be crucified for us. The ultimate sacrifice. So all this chitter chatter and social media and what this and what that, it doesn't matter. I don't want to go off more into, I don't want to go on to, go off into a tangent, but I would say this. You know, some of you see, you know, the brand and she's traveling and she's doing this, and she's doing that. Oh, she must have a team. Oh, she must. No, I don't. I have, you know, um, Jesus Incorporated is my PR team. I don't know how oppo- opportunities come. And somebody else may be like, oh, she got it going on. Like, you know, her dad really set her up. No, you know, he, he hooked me up a little bit, but he don't have a hookup at Black Enterprise. Brown Girls Do Invest came from me saying goodbye to a VP position at my fingertips. Six-figure plus at my fingertips to go and support a mission to educate brown women on why they need to invest. At the time, we were forty women in a room, forty to maybe fifty women in a room. Fast forward, it hasn't even been three years. We're talking about two hundred, three hundred, four hundred people selling out host, oh, uh, big venues that I could have never even thought was possible. And yet I still praise God when I had to walk away from the company. I still praised him. And I promised him, I said, God, I'm going to, I'm going to jump out here and I'm going to leak, make a jump on, make a, make a leap of faith. And I promise you, if you crack open the sky of heaven and you pour down financial wealth, allow me to be a sponsor to your people, I promise you that on every mic that I touch, I will declare your word. So when you see the posts, when you see the talks, that ain't for play anybody. That's my assignment. That's my vow to God. He said he was going to take care of me, so I said I was going to teach his people. So we're not going to chase money, we're going to chase God, but we're going to get blessed along the way. The money is just so happened to be the pro- the byproduct of the sacrifice. So I'm sharing this with you because I want you to stay encouraged, have faith through it all, no matter what anybody has to say. And it will happen. I claim it for you that you're going to do it all. You will be the elevation of your generation. And you may not be here to see it all, like Ab- you, like Abraham, he didn't see it all. Like, like, uh, like Noah, he didn't see it all, but they were the ones that took the first step. Your name will be great because your grandchildren will know the sacrifice that you made for their lives to be different. You will be blessed because through your blessing, you will bless others. And God will curse those that curse you. So don't worry about trying to quote unquote clap back to somebody online. Still believe God. That's all you got to respond to him and say, I still believe God. When they start acting crazy and they hating, I still believe God. Leave it up to him. Because what he did with Abraham, he can and will do with you. But you got to have that walk with him and, and be able to know his voice when he says, go left and go right. And sometimes when he gets quiet, that's how you know you got growth. Somebody said it earlier tonight. Oh, when God got quiet and I stopped hearing, hmm, that's growth. You know why? Because I don't have to change your diapers as much. I don't have to feed you as mu- as much. You should be at a point now that you're being a teacher. So how often you used to hear my voice is different to this level because you're not in second grade anymore, you're in ninth grade. When Haley was in second grade, I was checking her homework every night. Boo boo, you in high school, did you start studying? Did you look at your agenda? That's what God does with us. So don't get disturbed by the quietness. That's him showing you there's maturity. And if you can't remember, if you can't, if you're not sure about your next step, just go back to the last thing that he told you to do. So ladies, we're going to go into prayer. Um, again, thank you for, for coming into our first Faith, Faith and Finance Bible Study comeback um, on, uh, November the twenty-seventh. Roxanne James, all the way from the island of Trinidad and Tobago will be here. You will get your Bible study guide email roughly about a week prior, so you're prepared for the, uh, for the conversation. Oh God, we just thank you for tonight. We thank you for your word, God. We thank you for elevation, Lord. We thank you for legacy. We thank you for God calling on our forefathers, God, so we can have an example of how to do this faith thing. How do we walk with you? How do we talk with you? How do we have a relationship with you? Oh God, we know that you are truly the author of it all. You have it all figured out, Lord. So we ask that you just cut our speech, God, when we start to question it, just eliminate it, that we know how to bite our tongue, so we don't end up being in our own way. Lord, we know that our assignment is much bigger than what we can even see. There are thousands of people that are connected to our obedience. So God, please don't allow us to delay in anything that you are asking us to do. We know that we got generational curses to break. We know that we got lives to change. We got kingdom problems to solve through our obedience to your will and to your way. So God, let tonight be a plant in good soil. Let it be a seed in good soil, that as these women depart, that they don't depart from your word as we, as we end this life, that we only go back to your word and we seek it and we learn it. So we create a sword and that your name is signed on our tongue, that when anybody asks, how did we do it? We could only say, oh, but God, God, we come to you and we can't say thank you enough for your grace and your mercy. So just as was Enoch, God, he spent his last three hundred years with you, but he didn't spend his whole three sixty-five. God, we know that right now is a changing point in our lives. So what of what we did for the past twenty years? So what for what we did the last ten years? Today is our change time, God. So for anybody, Lord, that is coming to you, God, we just ask them that you forgive them, that you forgive us, Lord, as we are coming closer to you, that we are getting more of a relationship with you, that we'll hear your voice more, Lord. So Lord, we just ask you that you give us, uh, safe and traveling mercies. If anybody is still on the road or getting ready to get on the road, allow them to get home safely, Lord. Be a blanket of security to them, Father God. Lord, any, uh, you know, the, you know what you have placed on these women, you know, the assignment that you have given. And Lord, we know that you use angels and you use people to get your will done. So Lord, as you send the angels, Father God, to be the, to be the shepherd, to usher us into the right rooms. Lord, send your support angels along the way, so it's going to really get done. We know, we don't have to pray over things two and three times because God wants we said it once, it's already done. But our faith is what gives us access. So God, increase our faith account, increase our strength, increase our courage, God, to believe everything that is in your written word as we continue to chase after you. So Lord, we thank you. We give you all the glory, the praise and the honor in your precious and holy name. It is done, it is done. In Jesus' holy name, amen. Ladies, thank you so much and, um, we'll be seeing you in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.